Officer, could you close the door in the back, please? Thank you. So, it is six o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of housekeeping things for the record. For one, I'd like to inform everybody that Councilmember Fernandez is with us remotely. She is participating in the meeting, as per our rules. It was previously approved by the council for her to do so. So she is with us. Second is I'd like to remind everybody kind of the scope of the meeting, what we're here to do and what we're kind of not here to do. So, as everybody, I think, knows, or you wouldn't be here and you probably wouldn't be watching if you're at home, the school district has undertaken a study, district-wide, and the purpose of the study is to discuss the utilization of the current schools. And some schools are being overutilized, they're overcapacity, and then other schools are underutilized and extremely below capacity. And so the district is, and rightfully so, the district is looking for opportunities to do a couple of things. One is to reset the boundaries different, to redistrict the boundaries for each of the schools, particularly those that are over or under capacity. And two, potentially repurpose part of some schools campuses, or some schools entirely would be repurposed. And so, one of the schools on the list of potential boundary changes and/or partial or full repurposing is Greco Middle School. And so at our last regular council meeting, I asked the council to meet tonight to discuss this. And so that's what we're here to do. But I want to point out a couple of things. And one is since we set this meeting, the district has published some new information that we didn't have when we set the meeting. So the scenario has changed to some extent. But what we're here to do tonight is to hopefully adopt language that can be put into a resolution to formalize the city council's position on this and what we would like to encourage the district to do in terms of Greco. So we're here simply to talk about Greco and to talk about what our position is. Because as you know, and for a couple of reasons. One, so we're all on the same sheet of music and we're all speaking the same message. And two, under our form of government, I really can't advocate or advance the position as if city's position unless the council's adopted a certain position. So this will hopefully give me the ability to do that, as well as give members of the public who may interact with members of the school board or district to hopefully pull in the same direction and advocate for the same things. So this really, the scope of this meeting is really very narrow. We're not here to hold a trial over what we think of the district or the study or the, what's going to happen in Riverview. We're not really, we're here strictly to focus on the potential impacts to Greco Middle School. I'd also like to remind everybody that the school district and the school board are not our opponents in this. They're not, we're not, this is not an adversarial type of thing. We're not meeting to figure out what we're going to tell the district they have to do. And this is not that kind of a relationship. What we're hoping to do is adopt a realistic position that we can go to the district and encourage them and tell them, look, we'd like to partner with you. We all have the same goals. We want Greco to be successful and improve and continue to improve, really. So they're not, school district's not an opponent in this, they're not an adversary in this. So, again, we're not here to hold trial over the school district or the school board. And the other thing is, we're not the school board. So we don't really need to, you know, go into, well, they should do this or, you know, this is what they should do in Riverview, Rattan Country. But we're not the school board, that's their job. So I'll try to, please try to keep your comments constructive. This is what we'd like to see do, not just lament what they're doing. And hopefully we can adopt some positions here that will be constructive for all involved. Is that fair enough, councilmembers? Councilmember Fernandez, are you able to hear us okay? Everything's good?
Yep, I can hear you and see you.
Okay, great, thank you. So we do have a couple of members of the public here. Just like our normal rules, each of you can have up to three minutes if you'd like to speak. You don't have to, but if you'd like to speak, we'd like to hear from you. And just please state your name and city of residence if you want to comment. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if not, that's okay too. Okay, so, I'm not sure how to do this. Do you want to just go down the dais? Is that, all right. Vice Mayor, why don't you kick it off then?
By any chance, do we have a copy of the handout you sent out on Friday that we could all look at?
Well, what we could do, since there's some new information...
Is that the new information you're talking about?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we have our, we have our IT director, Sally Cabrera is here. And maybe prior to discussion, it would be a good idea to put these... Since we met last, the school district has published three potential scenarios that concern Greco Middle School. So Sally, if you could put that up, there we go. Now, this is, maybe this is all, maybe it's a little too big there. No, the left table needs to be shrunk so we can see the left side of it.
Mayor.
It won't, okay. So there's really four different scenarios here. One is the existing, and that is to basically do nothing. I don't know, I don't think that's a very realistic option. I think the school district is probably going to do something. The next is Scenario 1, and if you'll click on that. Scenario 1 changes the boundaries a little bit, and each of them do. Scenario 1 and 3 both change the boundaries. Scenario 2 is the one that, it's on the left, there's not exactly what we went through today.
Can you scroll down to the left column, to the bottom where it says get school information?
I'm looking to bring up the three scenarios as they pertain to Greco. There you go.
Okay.
No, that's not what I'm looking at earlier today.
If you scroll down, it'd be there now, if she scrolled down, it'd be there now.
Maybe, scroll down on the left again and see if it's come up, there we go. Here we go, okay. Scroll down a little bit more. Okay, Scenario, here we go. This is what I looked, the city manager and I looked at today, and this was kind of our thinking on this. Scenario 1 really involves very little or really no change. Scenario 3 involves significant change. That basically involves the closing of Jennings Middle School, and all, most of those students would then come to Greco. It would significantly increase the student population at Greco, as you can see, would bring it up to 96%. Scenario 2 is the one that, in my mind, concerns me a little bit because that one decreases the utilization of Greco from 59, from 69% to 59%. Personally, my concern with that is that it positions Greco for future closure or future cuts. It shrinks it even smaller than it is now. That one, that scenario also involves some question marks that are not available to us right now. The information is not there. That involves potential partial repurposing of Greco. And I don't know exactly what that means when they say partial repurposing. I don't know what the repurposing to would be, and that's not available on the website. So when I look at these, it seems to me that the best position for us to adopt concerning Greco as a city would be to try to urge the district to continue along the lines of what they have been doing, and that is to make Greco a partial IB school. They've already invested in that strategy. They've been working towards that goal for two years now, and they've actually spent funds to obtain the required certifications and to prepare for that transition. In terms of the boundary changes, I don't know how much influence we're going to have over that. It would just seem to me that we would want to encourage the district not to do anything that would diminish the utilization of Greco and that we would urge them to continue along the track that they've been going towards, towards the IB program. So, back to Vice Mayor.
I kind of like the third scenario leaving the actual maximization of the pupils, the pupil population. It increases the anchor to the school, as you said, to your point. And my only concern with that, though, is you pull the kids from way out. That's a hike in the morning. That's, that, and I saw a study somewhere, which, and I didn't bring it with me because I thought we were going to get, it'd be on here, where it actually showed the cost adjustments with and without, and what the differences would be. I'd really rather not see it become office spaces because then, as you said, that can be moved in a heart, in an over, in a weekend. So we could end up with that closed. The efforts that Greco has done through the last couple of years, three years, pre-COVID, and now, has been quite significant in trying to rebuild the school, increase what's going, improve what's going on there. And they were already two years into the IB application process, which I know with COVID and everything, it delayed it, but they've already done quite a bit of work towards that. So I hate to see them lose the initiative. Given the fact that it's, it's just so that, to my understanding, it's not IB like high school IB. It's more of a holistic, you know, getting with international studies and stuff like that, as with the elementary school. It's more of a transition into it. But it would be a magnet from other areas to come to Greco and opportunities for that because we, I think it'd be the only IB middle school, to my knowledge, unless, I don't, is it the only one? I think it's the only one, but I'm not 100% certain.
No, it's not.
No?
Williams.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Williams, that's right, Williams, Williams is the other one, that's true. I apologize for that.
And there's another one in Citrus Park.
Oh, okay, so it would be nice to have it on this end of town, too. So I'd like to see us go to three, provided we can continue with the IB, especially if we can continue with the IB program and move that forward so that it gives students on this end of the county an opportunity to participate in that line of studies.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And we'll certainly come back as the discussion unfolds. Councilmember Chambers?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree pretty much everything that Councilmember Schisler said, and you. If I had to pick one of the three, three would be my scenario. But my number one goal is to see that Greco continue on as an IB school. I think that's most beneficial to Temple Terrace. So I really can't add anymore. What Vice Mayor Schisler said was right on target, so Scenario 3.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Abel?
I'd echo that as well. They've worked so hard to make it an IB program and invested a lot in it, and I'd hate to see that lost. Furthermore, I want to make sure that we discuss the boundaries as making sure all Temple Terrace kids are zoned for Greco because I think that that strengthens our community to have all the kids go into the same middle school. If the kids from Jennings go there, too, that's the more the merrier. And also, that promotes utilization, like you said, Mayor Ross, about increasing the utilization strengthens the school and makes it something that's less likely to get cut in the future. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Abel. Councilmember Fernandez?
All right, so I know you said that we're only speaking about Greco in this meeting, but the scenario number three actually has really strong implications for King High School, which is a school that is zoned for Temple Terrace residents. And the concerns are, and I'm not sure that anyone is actually looking at this when they're doing these analysis at the district level, but that, choice number three could actually cause some students from neighborhoods that are not friendly to each other to now be at King High School, which would actually denigrate the student activity and the student experience at King High School, which will have a huge impact on Temple Terrace residents and their desire to attend that school. So I know we're very focused on Greco, but that is a major impact of the option number three. So my concern is that the district has not been pursuing the IB magnet. It's not going to be a magnet school because if it is a magnet school, then everyone has to apply. You cannot be zoned for the school, and that's not very good for our residents. However, they're not necessarily aggressively pursuing it, but if they do really pursue the IB program, then that could add to the academic success of the students. So I'm in favor of programs that will enhance the student academic success. I do want to know, who actually, how did we deed these schools, this property to the school district? Did we, did they buy it from us at any time? Did we sell it to them for a dollar? Did the school district actually pay fair market value for the property? Because if we deeded it to them absolutely free and clear, or even sold for a dollar, I feel like we should have a lot of say as to what happens on that campus and make sure that it's enhancing our city and our residents in this, in their education. So I really would like to know that. Also, I'm not, I am not opposed to a certain level of office use at the district level. In fact, it already happens in some cases. So the Area 3 offices are at Freedom, they're on the Freedom Campus. They're in a trailer on the Freedom Campus, but that's not, in and of itself, to me, that's not a bad thing. Now, obviously, we might have to position ourselves with some sort of agreement that the use of, the non-education use wouldn't change without our agreement. But I just, I'm concerned about, one, the students coming from so far away, it really, really hurts their engagement on the campus. It really, really hurts their ability to stay for after-school activities like sports, participate in clubs, if they need tutoring. So I'm, I'm not really in favor of Option 3. I'm more in favor of Option 2.
Option 2 is the one that reduces the utilization? That's the one you'd be in favor of?
It does. That it reduces the student utilization and would potentially be, the space might be used for what offices are now, or employees are now housed in the downtown building, they would come out and work actually at the campus.
So, Councilmember Fernandez, I don't know the history of the property. Do you know, was that property conveyed to the school district at some point by the city? Was that city previously, was that property previously owned by the city?
I don't know, that's why I'm actually asking that question. I don't know how the school district acquired it.
Does anybody know the answer to that question?
That's what I was just thinking about.
Yeah, it shows it was vacant property, but the school was built in 1962.
Is your microphone on so Councilmember Fernandez can hear you?
Yeah, when, I'm looking on the property appraisers' website right now, and then it gives a book and a page number and the year, January 1900 warranty deed, but when you click on the book and page link, it says it can't be found. So this is going to probably require more than just looking on the website to find this.
Okay, well, that's, I think Councilmember Fernandez raises an interesting point about the conveyance of the property, but I don't know that we're able to, I don't know. I don't know if we'll be able to find the answer to that question in time to get, for that information to be useful for what the language of the resolution. I don't know. It could be that a couple of phone calls and further searching, we might be able to get it tomorrow, but we might not be able to get it for a week, I don't know. Councilmember Abel?
I don't know if I agree that the manner in which the property was deeded to the school district really makes so much of a difference. I mean, it's their property now, it's district property. So I don't know if that really gives more weight to what we're saying here. I'm not sure if I understood that correctly, but I don't think it does.
It does, the reason I'm, for me, it does because if we gave them the property and we, and in the past, they have, we have, River Hills Elementary, I think we deeded it to them. That makes a difference to me because we have an expectation that it will be maintained as an education institution and used to educate our students. And if it's not going to be used that way, then I think, then the city should have a say in that. But again, if they bought it free and clear, it's their property.
Well, there is, there are other properties in the city that have similar, like the golf course, for instance. The city has control of the golf course property, but only under the, only under the conditions that it remains a golf course. The Lightfoot Center was given to the city, the property was given to the city. I don't know the terms of the agreement, whether that has to remain a senior center forever, I'm not sure. But there's other, there are other properties that were given with some conditions, and so I don't know. Can I ask you another question, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Abel?
No, I'm okay, go ahead.
You sure? Okay. Councilmember Fernandez, I do have a question, I'm not sure, I'd like to hear your, kind of your thought process on this. What's, in your mind, the advantages to Option 2, which reduces the utilization of Greco? What are the advantages to that over Option 1? I understand the difference between 2 and 3, but what's the advantages to Option 2 over Option 1 that maintains the current utilization? I'm not clear on that.
Um, I, to me, Option 1 is also a viable option. I'm only thinking of, something is probably going to change, and if we are going to have to have an option because Option 1 is essentially no change, then if we have to have a change, Option 2 is my preference. And I, and I know, and again, I know that we're talking about Greco specifically, but my concern is that Option 3 is, can be a very bad option for King High School, and that does impact our residents.
Okay, I think I understand a little bit better now, thank you. So let me throw this out and see if we have, if this sticks to the wall, if we, if we're in agreement on this. When we get into the specifics of boundary changes, every school boundary change touches six other schools. I mean, it, there's a domino effect to everyone. Like Option 3, for instance, if we say, oh, we love Option 3, I don't know, we would, but let's just say we like Option 3. Option 3 requires the closing of Jennings, which obviously the people that live around Jennings, and even some Temple Terrace parents are going to say, wait a minute, you're, you know, because my kid goes to Jennings because I like them to go to Jennings. So when we get into the specifics of telling or what we think they should do in terms of boundary changes, I think we're, in my opinion, we're kind of wading into, but it sounds like we all would agree to a statement that says, we'd like you to continue with pushing towards the IB goal. That's what you've been doing, we'd like you to continue to do that. We'd like you to ensure that the continuation at all Temple Terrace resident middle school children are district to that school. If they choose to go to, it's not a magnet school, so they don't have to apply and get shit right. So if you live in Temple Terrace, you don't have to get special permission for your child to go to Greco. They can go. And it sounds like we're in, well, I think, Councilmember Fernandez, correct me if I'm wrong in this, it sounds like we're in agreement to say that we would prefer you to take whatever action you take not result in the reduction in utilization of Greco.
I agree with that for Greco. Again, I'm just concerned, for King High School, it could cause some big issues that will be very bad for parents in Temple Terrace.
Option 3, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right.
So, the, what I'm talking about is that, what happens in Option 3 is that it brings together a lot of different neighborhoods in Temple Terrace. And the neighborhoods that they're talking about bringing in have some conflict, the student aged children have conflict amongst each other, between the different neighborhoods. So it may not be a good idea to bring someone from one location of Tampa to interact with the students who are already at King because they have neighborhood conflicts. And then they will fight on the campus, and then our parents will feel like there's not enough safety and security for their students. And that's something in the past, the district has been careful not to bring the neighborhoods together that have conflicts amongst each other. So this, Option 3, could potentially bring neighborhoods together that do have conflict amongst each other.
So let me, let me ask the Councilmember this. Would we be satisfied, and this is a question for each of you, would we be satisfied with a statement that's kept kind of simple, because I think it should be, that says to the school district that the city of Temple Terrace would like to see you maintain Greco as a middle school, continue along the path of IB, make sure that all Temple Terrace children are district to that school, it's not, doesn't become a magnet, that they're allowed to go to Greco, and that we would like you to adopt whatever scenario you come up with that doesn't have a net reduction in utilization of Greco? Is that something that everybody could agree to?
I can live with that.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm going to break protocol here a little bit, if you'll indulge me, because we've had some citizens come in late and miss the public comment portion of the meeting. And normally, I try to stick with our scripted agenda, but this is a very important topic to the residents, so I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to be heard. And there's only a few more, so if you'll indulge me. There's three more citizens than at the beginning. If any of you would like to speak, we, you have up to three minutes per person, and you're certainly willing, you're certainly welcome to provide any comments you like. Mrs. Dell? Allison, is this, Councilmember Fernandez, is this okay with you if we go off script a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this is Carol Dell from 1309 North River Hills Drive, and I really don't have anything planned that I was going to say. I really have two things, and they both would have a question mark at the end, so if I... have a question mark at the end, so if I don't, can I just say them without a question mark? And that would be, I'm not understanding how the people who would be coming to Greco, would they automatically now be zoned for King? I mean, that's where I'm getting confused. Is there any way y'all could talk that out about what Mrs. Fernandez was saying? I'm not supposed to ask her a question, I'm sorry, but I'm confused by that.
If, if we go along the lines of, I want to be careful here, because I don't want every three minutes to turn into a dialogue. But if we go along the lines of what I think the framework of our statement is going to look like, that become, that kind of becomes moot, because we don't get into statements about, we want you to draw the boundary here or there or somewhere else. So, we wouldn't, we would stay out of that.
Okay. I actually read in the newspaper, the only, the only option I read in the newspaper was the one about, that the county really, really needed, the school board really would like to have some more funds, and they could sell some of their administrative offices. And that because Greco is underused, that that would be a great place to put some of the administrative offices. And I actually thought that was the best idea, but that was the only idea that the newspaper had presented. I hadn't heard the other ideas, but now that I've heard the other ideas, I still think that's the best idea. I think that keeps, it keeps our boundary the way it is, and it keeps our children going to that school. And I think having the administrative offices on campus would probably be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dell. Other members of the public? Yes, sir. Well, she, I think I saw him first, ma'am. I'm sorry. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Richard Paz, one, two, three, Glen Riaj Avenue. I'm one of the school support committee people, so I just wanted to just, just voice in from what I've been able to hear and what I've looked up as well. I was listening already to that scenario three, that you guys just don't want to diminish anything, and that sounds great, and increase the IB population. I think repurposing, just, just from numbers that I've seen from the, from the district, for instance, the northeast zone is projected to increase by nearly another 3,600 students. So, I think it would be in our best interest to keep Greco open, or utilize as much as possible to prepare for future populations. And then, we were talking about commute, and I would think the commute would be even greater if we close Greco. You're adding even more miles, two, three, four, going on, and so on and so forth, as populations continue to grow as well in other areas that are in the zone too. In addition to that, they are, from what I've seen from some of the plans, the least aggressive scenario that they were talking about was, what, possibly moving 11,000 students, and only repurpose, fully repurposing, or closing maybe three schools. And the most aggressive was 24,007 schools. So, I think if the city decides that we want to try and pursue an IB program and continue to keep Greco open, I think that would fall in line with the plans that they already have. And I don't think it would be too much of an issue, hopefully, that Greco stays open, since they have the space for it as well. And just like I said, taking consideration, future population growth, another 3,600 students in the few, coming years, I think that's important to also acknowledge that keeping Greco open is also a necessity. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you are up next.
Hi, my name is Brenda Taylor, longtime, well, forever Temple Terrace resident. I'm on the board of the PTSA at Greco. My son was there. He now attends King, but I'm still on the board at Greco. We do have a problem at Greco, having parent involvement. Now, it's a middle school, people are only there three years, kids are only there three years, so I know it's always difficult for PTSAs at middle schools. However, we do have some students that are bused from far away, at present, at Greco, and we have a problem with involvement with those parents. And it's not necessarily their fault. These students are told, this is your school, we're going to bus you there. These parents sometimes don't even have good transportation to get to Greco for things. So, keeping Greco closer to home, boundaries closer to home, I should be reprimanded. I did not hear all of the three scenarios, but I think I got the idea after I was listening. It sounds to me like the third scenario is having Jennings closed and having the students, those students come to Greco, again, might be a problem if these kids are far away. Also, overcrowding at Greco creates, can create conflict, as Ms. Fernandez was saying. So, you know, to me, options one and two sound good. Having the district offices there shouldn't be a problem, you know, should be fine. But we just want to try to keep the students close to, close to Greco, coming to Greco, that don't live so far away. It would be better, I think, for our community and for Greco. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other members of the public? City manager, do you have any input on this? Anything you'd like to?
No, Mr. Mayor, do not accept. I wanted to note that the city clerk's staff has just distributed a copy of the, the history to Greco, the property history. And I'll let the city attorney, probably she's more of an expert in this than I am, to explain what at least we've found so far.
Looking, looking at a, something that might have been from the 1950s, I'm trying to figure this out. It looks like the grantor was okay, and Louise W. Lightfoot to the Board of Public Instruction of Hillsborough County. And I just, I'm just starting to read this. It starts in January of 1957. It was deeded to the state of Florida for right-of-way purposes. Long legal description. And it's, it was 2.01 acres more or less, but it appears to be, then it, then up here, it says 30 acres more or less, and somebody has handwritten this in. I'm probably going to have to look at some more related documents to this one to figure out what it is, but apparently, we have the original of this in our records. So, but in, but the grantor to the Board of Public Instruction, it's dated September 21, 1955, and was filed in October of 1955.
And it would also appear in the upper right as though it was sold to them for $22,500. So, it doesn't look like it was a gift. It looks like it was sold.
Right.
If you can assume the title coverage.
Vice Mayor?
If you can assume that the cost, I agree with you, if you assume that the type, the cost of the property was the value of the title policy. I don't know that that is, maybe that's the way it was back then. I don't know.
Councilmember Fernandez, I don't, if you, I don't know if you heard all that, and unfortunately, I don't have any way to let you look at what we're looking at. But obviously, there's a little more work to be done here, but it does look like it was sold to them in 1950. Well, there's three years on here. There's 55 is on here, 56 is on here, and 57 is on here. So, I don't know which one of those would be the sale date.
But it looks like it was private property.
It does look like it was private property owned by Omar and Louise Lightfoot.
And then, two years after receiving it, that is when the Board of Public Instruction gave the state the 2.01 acres to use as a right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, that was the information I was looking for.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
You know, we've got a bit of a dilemma. We have to determine what is our goal? Is our goal to just maintain Temple Terrace residents? Is it to maintain, you know, I think we already have that. I believe that the, the Greco district, all Temple Terrace students go to Greco. I don't believe there's any that go to anywhere else at this point that are within our, within our, but within our city, our city boundaries. We accomplished that about two, three years ago. And I think the district, I don't believe that the school district has modified those boundaries at all to jeopardize the way that, the way that shakes out. We have to determine, we have to decide whether we're trying to preserve Greco as a fully, a full educational institution with as many students as we can. Granted, the distances between where the students may live and where they're going to be educated could present problems, especially when we go east county, east of here, out into the Jennings area. And it looks like Jennings is in trouble, at least partially either way, under, under any of this, either one of the scenario two or scenario three. We satisfy the need to keep Greco children, Temple Terrace kids at Greco, or wherever they'll say want to go, but that's, that's a choice issue. But I'm not so much, I don't know that I agree with the premise that making a Greco change is going to have a ripple effect to create all kinds of problems for King. I, I would have to, I'd have to do some more research into something like that. I'm not aware of how, I don't know, I don't know the neighborhoods involved that are going to be in such conflict that it would create the issues that, that are being, being raised. I would be, I just don't know. I'd have to see something like that. But I think the more kids we have there, the better anchor on the institution will give us more resources to continue with the IB program and get that established. And I think that that's, that's going to be an important facet moving forward. You know, the area is growing. We've got Temple Terrace Highway, we have Fowler Avenue, east of the, east of the bypass canal. There's what, 270-some apartments being built in there. I don't know the exact number, but it's quite a chunk. You've got the, the north of, where's it, Telecom Park, you've got 93 units being built in there, I believe is the number. And there's, there's building all along the 301 corridor that, and east of, east of the 301 corridor. So, there's going to be student population. So, you know, and I realize that that description could help to solidify scenario two, but I think that's down the road. We're not, we're not there yet. And I think we need to, I still lean towards scenario three to ensure that Greco goes with the IB, stakes with IB, and of course, stick with the IB concept within Greco, makes it a stronger school, and see where it goes from there. I don't know.
Okay. So, I still, ma'am, we've had two public comment sections. I'm not going to, we can't do another one, but...
No, I had just, was looking up numbers of population at Jennings. Where are they going to put the kids?
Right, well, so, council, I really think if we could stick with four things that we seem to be in agreement, we would have a pretty strong position. And the four things that I've documented that we all seem to be in agreement with, I think this keeps us out of the school board milieu. We would like to urge you to keep Greco as a middle school, which it appears that all scenarios call for that anyway. But we would like to, Greco needs to continue to be a middle school. We would like you to continue along the course that you've started of becoming an IB school. We would like you to continue with the boundaries that all of Temple Terrace's district to go to Greco without any kind of special permission or hardship. And we'd like a scenario that has no net reduction in utilization. I think we would be smart to avoid getting into the specifics of boundary changes and trying to dictate to them how that, because they've got some work to do. I mean, they, they have to, let them figure that out. And as far as moving administrative offices, we don't have any need to get into that either. I mean, how would we feel if somebody, if the city of Plant City came along and told us where we're going to put our staff in our buildings? I mean, we wouldn't accept that very well. So, I don't think we need to, if we stick with those points, I think we're on firm ground. And we're also, by the way, in this statement, telling the school district, not only do we want you to do these things, but we're willing to continue to work with you and support you when you do these things. Through school grants and through the support of the principal and the staff, I mean, we've really tried to step up and support their efforts in the past few years, and we're willing to continue to do that. We're not just making a demand. We're, we're willing to roll up our sleeves and work with you to make this happen. Does that seem?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Fernandez, what are your thoughts?
Well, my only concern is that, I agree, being general is probably the most, the best choice. But if we, if the district is going to say, well, no, you have to say what you prefer, option one, two, or three, then are we going, would that come back and we would discuss it more and, and decide, you know, which, which option we support more? Because we're not, in this letter, we're not actually coming out and saying, okay, this is the option we support.
No, we're not.
That's all, that's fine.
And I think we would be smart not to do that, because these scenarios have changed just in the last week. They're subject to change again. We can't meet every time they, first of all, the vendor that's doing the study has not done doing it. They have listening sessions up until February. So, their scenarios could change, their possible scenarios could change 12 more times. And then, they have to distill this finding into, the school district has to look at these findings and say, well, we don't really like that, or we like this, or this is what we're, and then the school district has to take that to the school board, who can again, make changes. So, I mean, we could theoretically be meeting every week as things change, which I don't think is realistic.
No, I'm just asking for the future, if we, will we be called upon to actually say, you know, this is the option we prefer?
Well, I can't answer that. If, if at some point, they get this down to the point of this is what we're presenting to the school board, then I guess we could have another meeting to discuss that. But I don't know how to predict what they may or may not do.
Do we need a motion? Just, councilmember Abel had something there.
I just wanted to express my agreement with the four points that you have said several times. I think this is a great way for our community to advocate for our public middle school. So, I'm all for them.
Vice Mayor?
I agree. I think we need to move forward with it. It gives us talking points, so when we, when we're meeting with the district, this is what we're supporting. And we think that the efforts are, are going in the right direction.
Okay. Councilmember Fernandez, can you live with this strategy for now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Is there a motion? Would somebody like the four points?
Yes. Hey, I move to request a draft of a resolution, including maintaining Greco as a middle school, maintaining the IB program, keeping the boundaries such that all of Temple Terrace students are zoned to Greco, and recommending no reduction in utilization of Greco Middle School.
Second. Motion and the second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? We need a roll call vote. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Chambers?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. We will draft this language into a resolution, bring it before the council for final approval. Is there any other business to come before the council concerning this item? Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez, for taking time out of your leisure time. I appreciate you doing this. And I know it's more than an hour for you, because you have to set up and get everything ready, so we really appreciate it.
I'm glad, I didn't want to miss it.
Thank you. We will be adjourned.